It's all close, but we're all depending on that. And then Wisconsin too. Minnesota, I think he's going to take that, he's going to take Arizona.
He who?
Well, no, but I want to know what you're saying.
So we'll see, it's all, everybody's holding their breath right now. Are you holding your breath?
Good morning, everybody.
Hi Kathy.
Morning Kathy.
Good morning.
Looks like we're waiting for the people who are inside City Hall. Oh, I see Lori. I see Ed. Well, not Ed, but their names. Liz, I'm going to ask you for historical knowledge. Is this the first time that we don't know the president?
No, not really. I mean, if you remember, you know, Bush versus Gore ended up going to the Supreme Court. So, and there have been others that were too close to call, but I think, I saw an interesting thing on pointer.org, which is a journalism website that showed historic front pages through the decades of presidents.
Very interesting. Thank you. We're going to be in for some sunny days, which is nice. The sun's shining through the window and I don't know. I don't have curtains on that window because I'm a sun lover, but.
Same with me. I don't, I only have like those, you know, top things in my living room. Another thing we have in common Kathy. Near you have to take up all the sun you can.
Yep.
We won't see it till April again.
Well, we have this week.
So how much sleep did everybody get? I went to sleep, I tried to go to sleep at 10:30, then I kept waking up, then I looked at it. We had, it turned out we had a power outage yesterday that I didn't know about, and so one clock reset for like a half an hour later. And I was like, it totally threw me off. I mean, it was bad enough being up in the middle of the night at, you know, three and four, but then thinking I, I had to get up earlier than I had to was not fun.
We don't have Mel with us today. I don't see Mel on.
Didn't be coming. He texted me yesterday for the link and I resent it to him.
Okay.
He was planning on getting on. Liz, I slept about two and a half hours. Go to sleep, I'm like, alright, I'm gonna wait just a little while longer, see what else comes in.
I was surprised that I could go to sleep. I mean, I was shocked that I was able to sleep for a while and it, it did help a little bit.
We lost our power for about 15 minutes last night too.
Yeah, must have been in our neighborhood, Joe. I don't know.
Yeah, no, we, we lost power too. And I know several of the polling stations did.
Oh, so it might've been widespread then.
I was downtown at Level Place and it went out. I was just about to go in the elevator, but took the stair because the lights went out. Lighting wasn't. Wow. It was around, was it 6:30 or something like that? Six? I forgot.
Something like that.
I think that's about right. Yeah.
Do we have anybody speaking at the caucus or anything today? We don't, do we? Have anybody appearing before us?
Why did my phone say chamber update?
Amy was here last week, wasn't she? Or last meeting?
That's what I thought.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you.
Yep, my, my phone says chamber update. Eight thirty to nine, but. Jim, do you know anything about that?
Let me see if I'm unmuted. No, I do not know anything about a chamber update. I thought they were trying to do that at our last meeting.
Right, so hopefully, I don't know why my phone says that.
Michael Keys with us yet? Is he on?
Jim, I'm on, but I'm with, I'm with the finance guy. I'm listening.
Alrighty. Is there anything on the agenda council would like to discuss this morning?
I just wanted to ask David, maybe, you know, we have that demolition ordinance, which does not have, you know, what we had hoped a few years ago, which is the demolition delay. Could you just tell us a little bit about how that would fit in with the historic task force and I mean, this seems like a really needed thing. I think, I'm hoping it addresses a lot of those concerns that Fred raises about, you know, accessibility, just, I, I went through the memo and it seemed like it did, but David, I didn't know if you had anything to add or just, is it possible that now that we have it, at ordinance, we might eventually be able to update this too in, in light of what we're hoping to accomplish with historic property. So kind of a long question there.
Yeah, well, it's definitely something that's been needed and been discussed before in the past. But as far as historic preservation task force, it's something that we have discussed as a possible inclusion if we do overlay districts at some point. So it has been discussed, but I think it would be, it wouldn't be part of this demolition ordinance. It would be part of a overlay district in a, in an area. So it has been discussed. We'll continue to look at that, but I don't think it'd be just an over throughout the city. Or like this is, because this is really straightening out what should have been done a while ago, because a lot of these questions have been coming for years about what you do on sites for demolition and the dust and all those type of things. So it's definitely good for the city. We'll definitely have less issues. But hopefully in the future, we'll be addressing the, an actual delay at some point, given the right conditions and the right overlay.
Thanks David. And then Renee, do you know, does this, it struck me that it talked about making sure that there are, I guess, whatever, making sure that pedestrian access is considered with these demos. So, of course, construction is different than demolition, but is there anything more that we can communicate to people about what this means in terms of pedestrian access or protection?
I can check with Kathy to see exactly what the action steps are going to be, but I know the, the idea was that we're going to be giving more guidance and enforcing it. So, I don't, you know, I imagine code enforcement would be involved in that.
Okay, I do think, just having been downtown again recently, there still is a lot of construction activity and I haven't been the best in keeping up with our active transportation plan. I don't know if that addresses some of those issues about mobility, but you can see that it is scattershot. Some places are good and some are bad. So I think, especially as we approach, you know, winter, we shouldn't, maybe it'd be good to have a report on that. That would be helpful. But I think if we had an update on that, sometimes I feel a little bit at sea as to where we're at and how it could best be addressed. So.
Oh, we can do that. And I know, you know, Patrick Fisher had provided a grant to some artists to, to help us put together like an infographic for construction projects. And John Tushak was working with them. He was really excited about that project. And I don't even know the status of it myself because I've been so busy with other stuff. So I think an update's a good idea and we can, we can get together and talk about that. And in fact, maybe I can even have somebody come to one of the council briefings on Fridays. Share that, or do you want to have somebody come to caucus at the next meeting?
Whatever it works for you. I, I've been working most Fridays.
Oh, okay.
And I'm doing it again this Friday. So I've been missing those, but maybe, you know, maybe there, presenting it at the Friday briefings would be good, but then maybe just a short recap for people who can't attend there, maybe even, I don't know, if maybe that might be something, you know, Lori might be able to do or our new person. Well, you know, we can think of other ways to communicate and because certainly we want to keep up the, the ways to keep in touch with each other. Thanks Renee, I appreciate that.
Sure, yeah.
Renee, has there been any contact with Chris Friday at Erie Park Authority? I don't know. I haven't received anything. Just wondered if there's been.
Yeah, we've been working with him. We're kind of trading financial information back and forth. He's working on an estimate for the proposal that he presented so that we can get a better handle on what that would look like financially for both sides.
Yeah, that's good. I knew you were trading data before, so it's good to get that straight, much without the right numbers. Thank you.
Yeah, we'd like to have an accurate, as accurate a picture as possible.
Awesome. Thank you.
I did ask Paul Lichtenwalter if where we were at with that. It has been included in our budget book that us, that we get $400,000 from the Park Authority. Whether all that's going to come to fruition, it's hard to say yet, but right now it's in our budget book that we're going to get 400,000. Hopefully it comes true. We have a, what's that? You'll be fine. Not a doubt in my mind. I don't hear anything on my phone. You might be. I might be. Can you guys hear me by chance? Thank you. I don't know if you guys heard me earlier. I did talk to Paul Lichtenwalter regarding the parking. Okay, thanks. Just so council is aware also, there's a few seats that need to be filled on various boards that we, maybe we'll discuss them during our finance meeting. Or I'll send a, or have Lori send out a list of the possible openings. I know Mr. Keys asked if he could have a sewer authority appointment. I had no problem with that, but there is numerous other ones that we do have to get filled. So we'll reach out with you guys on that.
Thanks Jim. I think it would be helpful to even to have, I know that the mayor's office has been working on, because it is, it's like a huge animal to, to wrestle with all those appointments, but it might be helpful to also look into early, you know, into 2021. And to remember that we did pass the resolution from David Brennan about, you know, open advertising those openings. So thanks for, I, I think it would be good to have that information at our fingertips. And I know how hard it is since I have, you know, I've gone through that authority sheet that we get, but I usually just do it year by year and circle them. So, and then we have some that actually, I think were unexpected because the terms weren't up, but the people have left. So I, I think that would be really helpful. And David, can you just recap what our resolution was? So we remind ourselves about appointments.
Yeah, well, a lot of, a lot of the work has been done by Renee and everyone working with her is to put, make it all public to, to describe each of the authorities, what they do, what the, what the current terms are, who's on the board. You know, we don't yet have a section, and again, correct me if I'm wrong here, to say what the latest open openings are besides just, you know, listen to board members, listening to board members. So I don't know if we, what the next step would be Renee to, to be able to make this.
So right now on the website, it's, this is kind of an interim step until we can build out something better. But we have the, most of the authorities, boards and commissions listed now on a page, and then you can click on each one and you can see who's on the board, what the terms are, what the authority does. There are links to their minutes, lists there, when their public meetings are. So then what I'm, what I'm doing, I'm almost done with it, is a, is then a Google sheet with all of the authorities, the ones that you, the members that you appoint and the members that we appoint. So that we can see when the terms are expiring. And what I was thinking was since it's already so late in 2020 that we could advertise all the positions for, that are, have expired and those that will be expiring in 2021. We can receive applications now and we'll be ahead of the game. And then what the mayor's office has done historically once so far, but going forward is that we, we review the applications that we get for the positions that the mayor appoints. We do interviews with those folks who have the skill sets that the executive directors have identified that they need, which, which is also going to be in the spreadsheet, which I'm going to share with Lori when it's complete. And then from the interviews, we determine who's the best fit and make the appointments from them. So what we would do is any applications, what we ask for is a resume and a letter of, of interest for serving on this, you know, specific authority border commission. Whatever we get for any positions that you appoint, we would just send those over to Lori to distribute to you. And then I know, you know, Dave, I'm, 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 I still plan to write this up for you. But then you guys can figure out how you're, you know, if you're going to interview, if you're going to have like a a committee or something that goes through the applications, or if you're going to have, I know you're each liaisons to certain authorities, boards and commissions. So I don't, you know, I guess you need to figure out how you're going to do yours. But at least that way, if you know of somebody who wants to serve on this, the sewer authority or the airport authority or, you know, you can share with them the CityGrows link so that they can go ahead and put their application in. So that way we have everything in one place.
Yeah, and that's why I was looking for some type of procedure so that we could discuss as a council, because you know, right now we have a system where, you know, of course, we work with the, the president, the president, we, we kind of see who has the next appointment. So there's, there's somewhat of a system, but if, if we could just kind of talk about an approach and maybe refine or do what we can to, to speak as a council to come together and decide what. what we can to speak as a council to come together and decide what we want to do.
I think a committee approach would be great with the liaison person on that committee, a three-person committee. I know Kathy Schoff and I have reviewed resumes for several appointments. And it's tough doing it as a one-person reviewer. I think that if we had a committee or knew that the process was committee-driven, then that process is in place. And we, you know, have some criteria in terms of expertise, you know, making the appointments reflect the people in our community. And, you know, again, since we're going to look, thank you for doing the long view too, Renee. I really appreciate that. I think one thing, maybe we can, I don't know how we would do this, but, you know, that EMTA situation, which was both city and county, I mean, it was controversial. But I wonder if there's anybody from there who, who's on the board who might say, maybe a takeaway from that or what we learned from that. I mean, that was the most highly visible one. And, and each board and authority, they, they perform different functions. But we also know that there are sometimes people who, people have to know what their commitment is in terms of time and, and going to the meetings. I think it's probably easier now that even post pandemic that, you know, if we can continue to have some of those virtually, or always virtual that you, you know, the public can attend, that might open up new possibilities too. So I'm really excited about, it's a long haul, but we're getting there. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Renee, for all your work there and everyone, all your team.
Happy to do it.
Okay. Mel is trying to get on. I just called him. He's, he's trying to get on.
It can be. We stole a few minutes. So before we, we're not normally early for a council. You want me to call him, you say? Mike, what's your number? Eight eight seven five.
Renee, do you remember how many port authority people were needed? It seemed, I was reviewing some the other day and it seemed like there were quite a few on there that needed assignments.
Actually, there's a real problem with the.
You're on?
And so, like, the majority of the board was going to come up because of things that happened over the years. And so what we're going to do is actually kind of reconfigure that the way we did with EMTA to stagger the, those who are going off. So we'll be appointing two new people this year. And then the rest will be staggered, with, you know, three going off in 21, 21, three in 22, three in 23. So that you don't have, I think it was like six or seven. So we can't do that. There would be no historical context for anything. So we're going to, we're going to fix that.
And Renee, on that regard, do you pick those people or do, does council have an appointment on there?
Port Authority is the mayor's.
Okay.
Yes, we, we don't have any appointments to the Port Authority. I think it's, is it the mayor, the county and this, and the governor, Renee?
Yeah, that's right. Actually, I misspoke. It's the mayor and the governor. It's just the mayor and the governor. The Erie County Convention Center Authority is also county.
Yeah. It's one of those things where we might, I'm, I'm trying to be very optimistic this morning. So I'm thinking we might benefit from doing some civic education too. You know, we have the Jefferson, we had the young Erie professionals appear before us. We have other, you know, we have the, you know, black businesses on Wall Street near, we have, you know, the mayor's various councils, even SPCP, where we could reach out and say, this is how government functions. It's, it's not just council and the mayor in, you know, in the city, but there's also these boards and authorities. So I'm, I'm trying to think ahead to how we, you've done so much on engagement, but it's never going to be done. We still have to keep working on that.
I agree with you. And I think, you know, I think a study session might be a good place to start. You know, after the first of the year, maybe, to, to explain all that. Because if you're not in it, you, you don't know.
No. Council and I, I blanked out on the Port Authority, even though I used to have that right at my fingertips. So.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no other discussion council. I believe we can get our. Meeting going here. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't know if you're unmuted or not. Now we can. Yeah.
Motion to accept the minutes from October 7, 2020, city council meeting and bills for payment on November 6 and November 13. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Winarski. We have one letter from a repository sale. It's from Mr. Robert Steiner regarding the property at 3003 Brandis. Please be advised, I wish to purchase a parcel from the county. The address is 3003 Brandis for a purchase price of 250. Due to COVID-19, city hall is closed. As requested, this letter is being forwarded for review by council. Is the property vacant or does it have a structure on it? The property currently has no structure. It remains vacant. What are your plans and intentions for the property? Maintain landscape, garden potential to build fence. What condition is the property in? My family has been maintaining the parcel since the dwelling burned. Do you live near the property? It is adjacent to my current address, which is located at 3005 Brandis. How do you provide for, how will you provide for maintenance of the property such as responsibilities for mowing, snow removal, rubbish removal, board and seal, et cetera, and any repairs necessary to bring the property up to code? Maintenance, mowing, snow removal will be provided as needed, required. Currently a vacant lot. Thank you for your consideration. Robert Steiner. Okay, we have ordinances for final passage. Ordinance, council file number 16182, council file ordinance number 382020, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Erie, Part One Administrative Code, Title VII Employment Provisions, Pensions, Articles 149, Firefighters Pension Fund by amending Section 14901G regarding who serves on the Board of Managers. Sponsored by Mrs. Schoff, seconded by Mrs. Allen, the council file ordinance 16182, and now known as official file ordinance 382020, be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council passes official file ordinance 382020 by yeas seven, nays zero. Council file ordinance 16183, official file ordinance 392020, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $190,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue received from a Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Greenway Trails Recreation Program grant for the McLoughlin Park Improvement Project Phase Three. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Schoff, the council file ordinance bill 16183, and now known as official file ordinance 392020, be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council passes official file ordinance number 392020 by yeas seven, nays zero. I should mention, Mr. President, that we had no citizens to be heard signed up.
Mike, do we have anybody online even waiting or trying to call in? Okay, if we can start with the first one, Mr. Trot. Mr. Trot, are you with us? Or you might have to lock him in. You have to unmute Mr. Trot. I might be muted. Mr. Trot, you're on. We would need you to unmute so we can start with our citizens to be heard.
Good morning. Am I live?
Good morning. Yes, you are.
Well, Adam Trot, 531 West Sixth Street, second floor. Thanks. I'll be brief. I'm hoping that we can have some good sessions on the Bayfront Parkway to implement the kinds of design elements that are still missing from the plan. I know city council expecting it more access to weigh in on the plan as it moves forward. But I'm hoping that it can be a very good synergistic process between the residents, the power brokers and PennDOT. I'm optimistic that we can do something right here. But I'm just hoping that it's fact-based and that we get the opportunity to work with PennDOT and that PennDOT doesn't just steamroll this thing through as it is today. Because it'd be a nightmare if it went through as they have it today. That's, that's all I wanted to say. And thank you for all your work. And I hope you have a good day.
Thank you, sir. We have another one? Good morning. Can you hear us?
Yes, sir. I have nothing to say. I, I'm just monitoring the meeting.
All righty. Thank you, sir.
Lori, excuse me. Unmute yourself, please.
Thanks, Kathy. Council file ordinance 16184, official file ordinance 402020, an ordinance with the 2020 City of Erie budget that sum of $2,500,000 is appropriated from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue. This amount is received by the City of Erie from the Erie Water Works as part of the lease prepayment transaction. Sponsored by Mrs. Schoff, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the council file bill number 16184, and now known as official file ordinance 402020, be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Council file pass official file ordinance number 402020 by yeas seven, nays zero. Ordinances for first reading, council file number 16185. This is an ordinance, prior to the issuance of a demolition permit, the contractor, the owners must comply with all the code enforcement procedures, ordinances, and conditions. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mrs. Schoff, council file ordinance 16185, having first reading by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Council file number 16185, adopted by city council, eight, zero, yeas seven. Council file number 16186, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $108,745.71 for unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof contributions from the Department of Homeland Security 2019 Fire Department and Safety Grant. Sponsored by Mrs. Schoff, seconded by Mrs. Allen, the council file ordinance 16186. Having Been Read, Is Hereby Adopted On First Reading By City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Council File Ordinance 16186 Has Been Read, Adopted By City Council On First Reading, Nays, Zero, Yea Seven. Okay, Council File Ordinance 16187, An Ordinance Appropriating The Sum Of $102,500 From Unappropriated And Unanticipated Revenue For The Expenditure Thereof. Did I? The, the contribution is from the Department of Homeland Security 2019 Fire Prevention. Sponsored By Mrs. Schoff, Seconded By Mrs. Allen, The Council File Ordinance 16187, Having Been Read, Is Hereby Adopted On First Reading By City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Council File Number 16187 Passes A First Reading By Yea Seven, Nays, Zero. Okay. This takes us to new business.
Wouldn't there be a few more first readings? Mr. President? There might be a few more first readings.
I read them all. 185, 186, and 187.
Move the ballots.
Second. Any separations, Council? Hearing none. All righty. You were muted, but that's okay. We're going to committee reports. Ms. Allen, do you have anything this morning?
I do, just a few things. The first one is that I attended the New American Council meeting last week, and I wasn't able to stay for the whole thing. It was two hours long, but Neekan ran a really good meeting to explain what's happening with the Welcoming Cities Initiative, and also had statistics on there that between 2013 and 2020, there were 2,636 new citizens sworn into, you know, be American citizens in our city, representing 96 countries. I think that that's really important to stress. We've been through a lot of turmoil in the last four years in terms of immigrants and refugees, and we know that they make our country not only vibrant, but they contribute to our economy. One of the, we, the meeting was really good. We also heard from Michael Outlaw. We broke into small groups, and there was a really interesting discussion about, even, you know, people talk about identity politics, but one of the discussion points was, how long are you called a new American? And so it's really interesting because is it, you know, we used to talk about people being first-generation immigrants, and at some point then you become, you just become American. So I think that there's really positive things happening there. That discussion also, and also in terms of some of the things that have happened in the last couple of weeks, including, you know, attempts at voter intimidation in Erie with, in Erie County with flyers from the KKK. That was very disturbing. I think it would be really important for City Council to consider following in the footsteps of Erie County Council, which has declared racism to be a public health issue. We can look at what County Council passed, and we can look at it and say, how, how can this be more than words? How can we amplify and build upon the mayor's message that he wants to eliminate, you know, racism and prejudice in our city? It seems to me that that has to be an overarching goal for not just the administration, but for council. So I think that we should, you know, take a look at what the county did and figure out where we can go from that and what we can do uniquely as city representatives to, to eradicate that public health issue. And speaking of public health, I was also thinking, especially in light of the increasing numbers of COVID cases, it would be helpful maybe, and I don't know, Renee, maybe this is another, you know, briefing update, might not have to be a study session, but I think it would be helpful to hear from wastewater treatment plant about our participation with BioBot, which is a tech company in, started by, I think, an MIT graduate, which is sampling wastewater at more than 400 cities across the country to give an early warning about where COVID is being detected. So I think it's something that would be helpful to let our citizens know. I mean, we get some periodic updates from Dr. Nadmorni about that, but I think it would be helpful to let our citizens know that Erie is participating in a, you know, high-tech process that has direct impact on public health. We also know, if you look at the, at the ZIP Code statistics on COVID, it's everywhere. And if, in particular, if you look at 16503, and if you look at now the percentage of African-Americans who have been affected by COVID, those, 16503 has, has become steady, and the percentage of African-Americans now, it's sad when anybody gets COVID, but it more reflects our population. So those outreach efforts in so many areas are to be commended because that, that's been very helpful. So the fourth thing I thought of, and this isn't really a committee report, but I've been thinking about all the various repository sales where people are acquiring side lots. And I think that might fit in with the Groundworks Initiative that Kathy Rosdick is bringing to us, to, which will involve having youth and adults working on various city improvement projects. I think it might be neat sometime. I don't know where we would highlight this, could, you know, could be done virtually, but you see a lot of people saying, I'm going to take care of this yard, I'm going to put a garden in, my kids are going to have more room to play. Wouldn't it be neat somehow to catalog how many of those lots have actually been transformed? I would think it's an easier get to buy a vacant side lot and say you're going to fix it up. We know that oftentimes when people acquire actual properties in repository sales, it becomes a huge issue to try and, you know, I'm going to fix this house for my family. And it turns out that, you know, a $250 house often has a lot more problems than people have resources. So just, just another thought to think of. I don't know if that would fit into the groundwork, but it occurred to me that we could even do a sampling of, you know, or self-reporting, tell us what, what you've done on your lot. And beautifying has, has a way of catching on in the neighborhood. And, oh, one last thing, there is going to be some type of rally in Perry Square today at noon. It's a democracy, count all our votes rally. And I am not quite sure who all is, is involved in promoting that, but it's a beautiful day to maybe, you know, stand up socially distanced and remind everybody what democracy is all about, starting at the local level. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Ms. Schoff?
Thank you, Mr. President. So it's my turn to talk. As for a committee report, I wasn't able to attend the HRC meeting that they had this month, but they are looking for attorneys for the board, and the attorneys will be paid $175 an hour. So any attorneys out there willing to jump on HRC, thank you. I also was not able to attend the EMTA meeting, but I did talk with the administration there, and their lift ridership is wonderful. I mean, that has really increased, but the ridership in general is 70% down still. So, you know, that is still a concern, but the buses are definitely clean. Yesterday, I was outside raking, and my driveway is a bus stop, and a gentleman was waiting for the bus. And my bus route has limited the times, so he had to go back to his place and, and wait before coming out again. But the bus is still riding, but some of them are on different times, so you have to make sure. I did want to bring a few people into the conversation. Thank you to people like my friend Karen Hunter, who has made many, many, many scarves. And she was able to donate those scarves to the MS Soup Kitchen, so the people will be receiving beautiful scarves because of her talent that she has contributed to the community. And thank you to people like Freda Tepfer, who was working the polls yesterday, Democracy in Action, and a lot of people volunteered their time and really, you know, went out there. So we had a wonderful historic Democracy in Action yesterday. Thank you to all the people who volunteered their time. We still have homeless in Erie City, and it's getting colder out. So thank you to all the people who are addressing the concerns of our needy during this time of COVID. COVID is definitely out there. I am myself quarantined at this time for exposure. You never know what will happen in your life, so you just have to be patient and thank people who assist you. And I am very grateful to all the people who are helping others in their need. I'm concerned about, I'm looking forward to the Port Authority study session. You know, I'm very concerned about if any businesses will be affected by their road. I know the first thing that I do when I go to a new place is always look and see what the family activities are. And in our travels with our family, my children have always gone to miniature golf adventures because that was always a family activity. And in larger cities, they're even larger than the ones we here, have here. But the Harborview Miniature Golf has been such a mainstay for 18 years. So I hope that they are able to be sustainable in the next year and the coming years. I'm very thankful for the demolition delay vote that we did. I think that's very important. As much as I like progress, I don't like historical buildings being taken down either. So that's all I have for today. This is the month of thankfulness, and just be thankful for as many things as you possibly can because a positive attitude is really important in your life to balance well-being and whatever. Thanks, have a great day.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schoff. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to report that I want to thank the 201 families in the Spoons League that responded to my Go Vote email. I appreciate them very, very much. Erie Housing Authority is doing quite well. They have no report of any of their workers with COVID at this time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mel. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of updates here. For the Parking Authority, we did talk a little bit in caucus before the meeting about the proposal they're putting together for taking over some of the ticketing, et cetera. There's some data being exchanged now so that, so that everyone completely knows the financial arrangements, and then the Parking Authority is going to make a proposal to, to move forward. So hopefully we'll hear from that soon and be able to move forward with a productive agreement for both the city and the Parking Authority. I just wanted to update some people on the authority's resolution. Again, we talked about that earlier, but their, the website has been started. The city has done a great job putting that together, and there's still a lot of work to go. It's a start. But the, the object of that, if you remember, the resolution the council passed is to create more transparency, to educate the public on what, what authorities do, what, who's on those boards, and how they could possibly assist or try to apply for a future position. So I think that the, right now, we're hoping to get some people that'll be able to offer their skills. A lot of these boards, they will note when there, when there's a board seat open, what type of skills and talent they're looking for. And I know there's a lot of people out there that can offer their, the skills to help out the city. And internally, I know council, we've discussed it before, we need to, we're going to talk further about our process internally for choosing, choosing council members to make these choices. So I think the, we've come a long way in kind of creating this transparency, and I'm looking forward to continue to move forward. And just to also note from past discussions on the Bayfront Parkway, I know there was one call on that. You know, council did have recommended, council members had recommendations that they put forward, and PennDOT received those. So I'm looking forward to hear from PennDOT on how we can be discussing these issues and the peer review committees. I'm guessing that we'll hear from them at some point soon to see what a schedule for those, for that public input and our input will be moving forward. And again, we're all hoping for a transformational project that really help our city, help our neighborhoods, and really help everybody as a first step to move forward. That's what if my report, thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Brzezinski?
Am I live?
You are live.
Okay, Port Authority and Civic Center, both lies, I am liaison to. Many good things happening at the Port Authority. At last count, at that meeting, I think they're talking about 12 ongoing projects. On November 12, we will have a study session, and Brenda will be telling us everything more in detail for everybody. With Casey, the same thing, he'll be here. We have a good chance of having that store at the Civic Center opening occupancies scheduled for sometime the end of this month. So good things happening. Back to the Port Authority. There's a lot of work to be done on that miniature golf course situation. A lot of people are aware of it, and they're worried that it's not going to get moved to the right place. Or, and Brenda will explain all of that completely at that 12th study session. I thank everybody out there who voted and all the people who were at the polls. It was a long day for everybody. It's probably going to be a long week. But democracy will win out in the end. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Brzezinski. Mr. Keys.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have the opportunity to attend the Airport Authority meeting. They extended the contract of their executive director. And so there'll be no changes in that direction over the next few years. And so they'll be able to stay on a consistent course on improving our airport. And the new flights from here to Dallas Airport are supposed to start soon. And that's a big win for the city of Erie. Other than that, I'm just happy that everyone exercised their constitutional rights and their citizen rights when having voted and voted their conscience yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keys. The only comments I have this morning, naturally, we have our finance meeting following this council meeting. Two, two biggest concerns that we're getting from our constituents out there is garbage fee increase as well as our sewer rate increase. So we're definitely going to look into that on how we can offset that one way or another because I agree with my constituents, to be honest with you, that we just had those increases last year. And there's got to be a way we can do something different to offset that this year. As well as at our finance meeting this morning, we will set up a budget session schedule. We'll see how that goes and more to follow there. Just so everybody knows, we did that 2.5 million was like a signing bonus per se that we got with the Water Authority when we agreed to the lease arrangement. And not like we're willing to, or even the administration, to start spending money. But what that is offsetting is the shortfalls we would have this year as well as the tax lien sale that was going to happen this year. And what the tax lien sale does is it offsets a shortfall that we may have during a year or get us extra money for the following year. And if we can hold up, the longer you can hold off on a tax lien sale, it's more money later. So doing it this way now is more beneficial for us as a whole. Every year, we do look into a tax lien sale to see what kind of money it can generate. But this happened, fortunately, this happened this year where we can not do that at this point. And we had monies to cover it without officially hitting the full dollar amount we're getting from the Water Authority in the lease deal. We're still around that $95, $96 million range, I believe. But with that being said, that's part of our work we still have to do and look forward to. On a sad note, we're losing a, or lost a Nunzi's Restaurant. 70 years of fixture in our community. I don't blame them for retiring, to be honest with you, but we are definitely going to miss them. We wish them well. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lanis.
Morning, everyone. I have a few things I want to update you on just quickly. There are several things that we're working on. And I just wanted to kind of, I wanted you to be aware. So as Councilman Brennan mentioned, I'm putting the finishing touches on the authority's boards and commission spreadsheet. And we'll be creating a transparent city growth process for people to apply for open positions on our authority's boards and commissions. So that will be coming out soon. Second, we had the, the RFQ out for artists to make proposals to wrap the, our bandwagons, our Two City Very bandwagons with vinyl wraps. This is going to be paid for through Cafe. And we, we have 12, we've received 12 proposals. We're in the process now of evaluating those and putting together the steering committee to, to go through those applications. Third, we're also working on implementation of the Secure Smart City into the opportunity zones. We've sent letters out to several small businesses, nearly 200 of them, and are in the process of following up with them to see if they would be willing to allow us to install a Wi-Fi access point on their building so that we can provide public Wi-Fi, free public Wi-Fi access. So that's, that's ongoing. We have an update, check in every couple of weeks to see where we are with that. We want to get moving on installation soon. Fourth, the mayor had the opportunity to meet with our Terrace Impact Investors during Erie Homecoming. And they've set up our Terrace Erie Opportunities Zone Fund and are now seeking for proposals. And they would like to invest $10 million into kind of transformational projects in Erie. And they encouraged the mayor to submit applications from the city. So the city is able to apply for that funding, and we're actively looking into that right now. I believe the deadline is end of December, and so we're working on that as well. Fifth, we had a, a great meeting with IRG, because International Recycling Groups, a new business that will be located in Erie. They are very green, and this is a new technology that they would be bringing here that would basically allow us to collect 100% of the plastics that we're throwing away right now. Right now, we, we only collect about 10%, about 90% go to landfill. So this would allow them to collect it all. They would bring the trucks into the facility, sort it inside, and then they would take it out and distribute it to their customers. There would be no toxins at the Erie plant, no carcinogens, no, no burning, nothing like that takes place. It's only a sorting process. And this will eliminate all of that plastic going to the landfill. It's very exciting, and they're, they're very community conscious and looking, they love Erie. They're looking forward to getting involved. Sixth, Paramount Pursuits, I think we've, we've talked about that with you before, and we did announce at a press conference in August. Paramount Pursuits is a, an incubator primarily for minorities, immigrants, refugees, and those who are low on the socioeconomic ladder, who are entrepreneurs that are interested in starting businesses, but need assistance, one-on-one mentoring to do that as opposed to just going straight to the SBDC. And so Paramount Pursuits works, they have a cohort. They've accepted 15 people into it as of right now. We provided them with $50,000 through our CDDG funding this year. And so the entrepreneurs can go through this free of charge. And in addition to the cohort, there are one-on-one meetings. They meet the, the entrepreneurs where they are and help them develop their skill sets and focus on their individual needs so that they can get their businesses up and running. They've been, this group has been very successful in both Beaver County and in the Pittsburgh area. And they have a tried and true method, and so we're looking forward to the results that that will have. Seventh, we're also working with a crowdfunding loan platform that would provide loans to these businesses. We want to leverage what we're doing with Paramount and with the SBDC. And the goal will be to help, to fund, to provide 0% interest, 0B loans to 12 businesses in 2021. And we'll be having more information coming out on that. Mayor and Jen Hoffman and our Department of Economic and Community Development are working on that very hard. Jen is going to be going through training this month, and we'll have more information for us about how that's going to work. But that's also a very exciting opportunity. I think the loans can be anywhere from $2,500 to $15,000. It provides startup funding for them. Eight, I wanted to give you an update on the Home Investment Partnership Program. We, through Veronica Fields in our Department of Economic and Community Development, we're using funding from HUD for first-time home buyers and home recap. Those who are income eligible can receive up to $24,999 for first-time home buyers or to bring their homes up to code. And Veronica Fields, as I said, runs that program. She's in the process of taking applications and checking people's eligibility and getting projects on the move. And then finally, the Groundwork Trust, as Liz mentioned, we've been going through a year-long feasibility study. And we're, I think we're all maybe the 20th or the 22nd trust in the United States. This will allow us to leverage potential funding through the EPA first service. And the neighborhood groups have been on the steering committee guiding the process. As, as the brainstorming has been going on, what we're currently looking at is, you know, right now, we have several neighborhood groups that have acquired vacant lots that they are, you know, now on the hook for maintaining. And so, for instance, Best has 62 vacant lots that they take care of. That inhibits their ability to do other things, like build the capacity of their residence, you know, do neighborhood revitalization. And so they want to be able to focus on other things. So what the Groundwork Trust will focus on is land reclamation, maintenance of vacant lots, for productive reuse, to, you know, get rid of brownfields and blight and really lift up the communities, the neighborhood, various neighborhoods, and empower the neighbors. And so what, what we're looking at doing is creating an adult core and also a youth training, which will be trained in the skills of how to do this work. And then we'll be employed to do that work throughout the neighborhood so that that will free up the neighborhood groups to do, to focus on the other work that they'd like to be able to do. So that's, those are very quick updates, and we'll, we'll be getting more information too on all those things as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. We do have our city controller with us this morning, but she has nothing to report. We do have the mayor with us also. And I know you normally don't like to comment at our morning meetings, mayor, but you took the time to join us this morning, so I'm sure you can make a comment or two.
I'll just, thank you. It's been a good meeting. Renee gave you a real excellent report on what's going on here in the city. I appreciate that a lot, Renee, and thanks for the good work you're doing. I look forward to the Finance Committee meeting next. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
For Renee, do we still have the mobile police unit?
You mean the Quebec unit?
I mean, I haven't seen it in years. I don't know if it's parked somewhere, or did we get rid of it?
I don't have to inquire.
Actually, actually, I think we, I think that's what we used when we went around to the neighborhoods the three times. That was, that's what we used for that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, well, I, I think with what we have going on, maybe we should try. I don't know if we can or not, but try to activate it in the same manner as we did when we first received it. Just a thought, just think about it, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Betza, do you have anything this morning?
I do not.
Good answer. No, thank you all. We'll adjourn this meeting in, in about five. We'll take a five-minute break and move on to finance. Thank you. Laurie?
...
Paul, for some reason, I see two of you on.
Oh, be quiet. You just went out.
Hi, I was muted too. I was on my phone and then now I'm getting on my computer. Can you see one of me or two of me? Or you can't hear me at all?
I can hear you, but not well.
Okay. I hate to do this. Can you come down here? Because they can't hear me on the, on the Zoom.
Unmute yourself.
I am unmuted. Should I turn up the volume? Kathy, can you hear me? Can you hear me better now?
I can hear you better now.
I had, okay, I turned up the volume. That was way too loud then, wasn't it? Brian King, I think I'm okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Kathy says better. So, okay.
Bye.
Thanks, Brian. Bye.
Paul, are we doing the October financials too?
I sent that out this morning.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. Whatever you want to talk about.
What are you going to, okay, I, I have the, the budget stuff too. I just wanted to download it so I have it.
Yeah, this morning, we sent out the budget summary, just the nine pager because the full budget, the full revenue expenditure report for October is really not in yet. Like Burkhyma, we're still only up through last Thursday and Ed's probably still working on real estate taxes. So that won't be posted hopefully until Friday or Monday. And then I, I gave you a little recap on where the water lease money is. And then we sent out the budget handout book this morning also. And then we, we gave the budget books. Everyone should have their budget book. And then I also put all this stuff down in your inboxes too, when I went down about an hour ago.
All right. Mr. President, are we ready to proceed?
Mr. Winarsky is not here in the chambers yet.
Hello, colleagues in City Hall. Are you there?
Can you hear me, Kathy?
Yes.
Yeah, they're not ready yet.
Thank you.
The president's not in the room and Brzezinski's not. Keyes is here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll have to get Frank to fix that.
Because it told me my password was incorrect for the council meeting. Your password is so that you could participate. My, I probably needed the government, just the public access password.
We'll talk to Frank next week.
Yeah, he needs to include Andrew, Chris, Christine and Kim and any of the department heads, all that.
Paul, good morning. We can hear you.
Oh, sorry. Lisa's standing at the door. We're talking about, she can't get on the Zoom. So we're going to talk to Frank next week about getting that straightened out. So when we have the budget sessions, I guess I'm talking to you now, but Jimmy probably needs to know this too. As president, when, when we call in the department heads, Lisa can't get on the Zoom because the password we have, I guess, is only for me. So we'll have to have Frank set it up so everybody, when David and Chuck and Dan and his command staff and everybody can then get on and talk.
They would just need to click on the link that's in the calendar invite.
Yeah, we've tried.
So that they can register independently and then they can, they'll be able to get in.
I agree with Renee. They should be able to get in without a problem.
We have some people who have meetings. We're going to have to get this show on the road.
Madam Vice President, I suggest you take over until the president returns.
Thank you, Michael. We're going to proceed with our finance meeting. Hopefully, our colleagues in the city will join us shortly. Good morning, Mayor Joe and staff. Renee, thank you for attending. And Mike Leeson, if you're listening, get those guys rounded up. Thanks. And Paul Lichtenwetter, you're on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. To start off the finance committee meeting, I, I sent out three different emails this morning. One, I guess, in order, the first, the first thing I wanted to talk about is I just gave everybody a little bit of a recap. There's a one-page Word document that's a recap of the, the money we received from the Water Authority and when we got it and where we got it and where it is right now. So to go through that document, the, the first thing, as you voted on this morning, we got $2.5 million amount, which was part of the lease prepayment agreement. We got that money on October 22. And that money right now is sitting in the general fund bank account to be used as a revenue in this year's general fund. I have an A and a B section to that document. And I guess, since you already voted on A, that's just a reading.
Paul, just before you go ahead, so we have that 2.5, but we're still going to have a deficit or?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That 2.5 is taking the place of doing the tax lien sale that we had budgeted last year. I guess if we put that 2.5 in the budget and also do a tax lien sale this year, then we would be close to a zero balance.
So what are we, I mean, I don't know if you, do you want, it just, are we taking steps? So if we don't do the tax lien sale to address, I, I guess, I was, I thought we were going to be able to take care of the deficit for this year. But we're in deeper than we thought. Am I reading your memo correctly?
When we, when we prepared the mid-year report, we were looking at a deficit somewhere between three to three and a half million dollars for this year.
Do we have any other options in addition to this money, the 2.5? Or is it tax lien sale or something else? I mean, we're getting down to the wire here.
Right, not.
And we, we can't end with a deficit, correct? I mean, we cannot, we have to have a balanced budget. Am I right?
We can, we can end with a deficit because we have a positive fund balance.
Okay.
Coming forward. At the end of 2019, we had a positive fund balance. So accounting rule wise, yes, we're allowed to end a year with a deficit.
But then that would, that would carry over till 2021. And would that impact our use of water lease money for 2021 and 2022?
Yes. Well, no, that money is already being accounted for in the use of the water lease money in '21 and '22 and '23 also. Well, as the, the mayor's report last week, when we handed out the budget, there's about $17 million we want to set aside for use over the next three years in the budget. And that goes forward, $3 million or so this year, a couple million dollars, which was appropriated into next year's budget, probably about $6 million a year after. And there'll be about $2 or $3 million left to use as part of the 2023 budget.
All right. I still think that, that this is going to, I know we're going to go over the budget, the proposed budget. And we got the, the workbook. I really think it's incumbent upon council and the administration to, God, I hate to use the cliche, sharpen the pencil, but I, I think we're, we're going to, we can't just accept this year of having people come before us and say, this is what I'm proposing to spend. This is where our revenues are going to be. We're going to, we, we really need to do this as not just three years out, but five years out. And we can't, we can't do business as usual. I know that there are, you know, a lot of good things that the administration has done, but it's, what's the date today? November 4th? There's a lot of hard work ahead for council and I hope that the administration will understand the predicament that we're in and explain it to citizens. They don't, you know, we're already getting blowback about the proposed fee increases. We can't just rely on increases. We need to look at some ways to cut. And better to come from the administration than to have council come in with the, with the acts. So that's all, I shouldn't say that's all I have to say. That's what I have to say right now.
I, I brought this up before, I think, to a couple of council members is, as we are seeing upcoming retirements, you know, can we look at those departments and see how to maybe spread out the work to still get it done, but not replace people? You know, I hate saying that, but if we only have so much budget, there needs to be some type of give somewhere.
Yeah, while I have all, all council here, some of the things that we are talking about is using the water reserve fund to balance the budget over the next couple of years and leave the money that we get from the water reserve fund alone for right now. And so, we're just throwing that out there for public knowledge.
I, I agree with Jim and Liz in that we are already getting feedback from our citizens who, especially the seniors. It's the seniors that are really seeming to discuss with us that they don't want any more fees because they are financially strapped in their budget.
Am I unmuted?
No, you're not. Slide your screen the other way. The other way. One more.
Speak. Hi. Ed Brzezinski, I'm sorry. I'm having trouble getting on this thing. I think the first thing that I have to say, and maybe everybody has thought about this, but not enough, this money that we're getting from the Water Authority was supposed to be for one thing, paying down the debt. That money cannot use to make us look good for a couple of years. That's money for future generations. Maybe I'll be pushing up grass when those people start looking at City Hall and wondering where that money went that was supposed to pay down the debt that we have right now. I spoke before and I told you in 1988, when I was on council the last time, we had a problem. We spent more money than we bring in and we're still doing it today. I would advocate, as Mr. Keyes mentioned, set that money aside. Let's get a budget that's a real budget. With COVID, there could be federal or there could be state money that would bail us out and help us, like they're going to be helping other places. If they see us sitting on that 95 million and throwing five here and three there and two there and seven there. And before you know it, $12, $15 million of that money is gone. It's not helping us, especially not helping the future of Erie. And I, I don't want to be gloom and doom, but David brought up a good idea too. There are retirements. Maybe those positions don't need to be filled. We don't know that. And we'll have to find it out in a real budget session. That's, that's where I'm coming from with it. I hope I don't offend people, but I am concerned about Erie's future. That's why I'm here.
So if we don't have any more statements, Paul?
Okay, so moving on with that document, we got that 2.5 million. It's in the general fund bank account. And then part two to that is we received the $96 million. And then part two to that is we received the $96 million from the Water Authority on the 23rd of October. We opened up a money market sweep account at Northwest Savings Bank because the last few years, that Northwest Savings has been the bank that has paid us the best interest rate. So we're parking that money there until, again, we go through the budget sessions, and a decision is made, you know, where to put that money, how we're allowed to invest that money, where we're allowed, where, I already said where, you know, how we're allowed to invest that money, and then we'll move forward from that. So we did, we did get the $96 million. It's in a new bank account that I think somebody asked me. Nobody can touch that other than the controller and the city treasurer. And obviously, they'll make sure that the money's spent properly. Or not spent, in this case. The second thing to go over this morning is the monthly summary report. And as I said earlier today, you know, being that it's only the fourth of the month, not everything is in. And we talked about the, the timing of things. The reports you're going to look at, we still have some income, income tax. One more day of income taxes to come in from Burckheimer. And the Treasurer's Office is still processing October tax payments. So this, the expenses are good because we wrote the last checks of the month last Friday. But the revenues between this document, what you'll see posted probably by the end of the week, beginning of next, will be a little different, and they'll obviously be a little higher. But the document you have right now, line one, our tax income is, right now, our real estate tax collections are a little up from last year to this year, which is a good thing. Based on the, the beginning assessment that was sent out, that all the bills of the real estate taxes, we've collected about 88.5% of the assessment this year, which is about 90, 99% of what we actually budgeted. And as you, you know, from looking in the handout book, which, you know, if you want to talk about today, the handout book shows that our last 10 years of collections of our real estate taxes have been right around the 90% mark. Also in the taxes, I thought was very interesting, and I keep bringing this up every month, is our LST tax. And when you see the document, it's going to show that our LST tax collections right now are about 76% of the budget, which is compared to last year, we were 79% of the budget at the end of October. So we're, we're falling behind by about 3% on our collections of the LST tax, which is an anomaly based on everything we're hearing about, you know, the three, four, five, six months that we were supposed to have the 10 to 15% unemployment. So I guess we'll know much better in about two weeks, when the third, the third quarter money is all turned in to Burckheimer, and they can give us a report to where we're at. But again, I've said this the last five months, maybe based on what we're seeing in the collection of LST taxes, people in Erie, maybe, you know, I'm going to say maybe because I don't know the answer. Maybe the unemployment in Erie was not as bad as statewide or nationwide. You know, and I'm sure there's, obviously, there's, there were people unemployed, but maybe the whole overall of the city wasn't that bad. But we'll, we'll see that when, when all the third quarter numbers come in, and hopefully, everybody gets back to the work fourth quarter, first quarter next year.
Paul, what page is that on?
That's right on the very first, well, that's all, on page two of your document, it's, it's just the line item that says, "A, Taxes." I'm looking, I'm looking at the full report that we printed out that's not completed yet because we're waiting for all the money to be turned in for the October time period. Because there's a timing issue there. So you'll get that thing, like I said, the end of this week, the beginning of next. You'll get the full document, the full 90-page book that we always hand out.
Thanks.
Going down that first page, again, you'll look at licenses and permits are up a little bit this year. Franchise fees, cable fees down just a hair. For the most part, the revenues are, they're 88% of what we had budgeted compared to last year, 89% at this time of where we had budgeted. So the, the things of note, again, your cable TV franchise is down just a hair. Our building permits are up a little bit, but they're still not, because of the COVID back in the spring, they're still not to where we had budgeted, or where we had, had, the code enforcement department had anticipated last year the building season would be this year. But as we know, when the mayor gives out the LERTA reports every, every, every time he has a press conference, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of LERTA applications that have been taken out. So the building permits are going to, there's going to be a bounce back on that pretty soon, sooner or later. Other line items of note, sorry about my phone. Other line items of note, the parking fines are up a little bit from last year to this year, and you'll see that in, in the traffic fines. And then at budget sessions, obviously, everybody was going to ask us about how that's going with the collections. Lisa has a report prepared for that, showing how that's going, why it's going, and where it's going. Other than that, in the revenue line items, everything's pretty much holding true to where it was either last year or where, where we had budgeted, budgeted it.
Well, what can we do about people who need to pay their bills, the refuse? We have, we have that posted on our city website, delinquencies, is that correct?
Correct.
And I was, I, I was going through them, and there was, I think, like 100-some pages, wasn't, is, am I right?
Yes.
114 pages of people who are delinquent?
Yes.
Um, you know, truthfully, if we could just somehow get some people to pay, then we wouldn't have to have these increases.
No, Kathy, you're right. And there's actually a hand, in, in the handout book, we updated the page last year that shows the delinquencies for those things. And they, they have gone up a little bit this year due to the COVID. But once that new ordinance was instituted by council a couple of years ago, the, the, the collections are not that bad. We, we go at about a 98% pace each year on what is billed to what is collected. So, I mean, there's always people that are having financial difficulties that are, that they, they're not able to pay. So we, we kind of budget, we, we budget that every year. Or we, or we, we take that into account in our budget. That's page 70 of, on the, on the handout book, which I really didn't want to go into that yet, but.
Michelle?
Pardon me?
Ed Brzezinski butting in here for a second.
No, no problem.
And I have asked, and I asked again today at the Treasurer's Office, I would like to see, and I'm going to be soon getting a list of multiple property owners who are playing that delayed taxpaying game that they play. It's not, it's not wrong because of the way the ordinance is written, but you're taking advantage of it. If they're not going to be taken to sale after, for three years, then they're two years behind.
Correct.
We need to find out how many of these people are taking advantage of the program. Not the people who are hurting that might be a little bit late with their home taxes because of the situation. So we'll have more of that when we start budget sessions. I was promised that we would have a list of the most prominent ones that are in arrears. And I would submit that there are probably some of them that we're looking at, pretty hefty hunks of change. I just throw that out because it's something that we should be dealing with, that's dead money. And it's not their fault.
And Ed, who does the legal ad for that? Who, who does that for the tax sale? Is that?
Once, once December 31st hits each year, that, the, the liens themselves and, and the delinquencies are turned over to the county. So the county's in charge of that. And, and Ed is correct. It, it, you're allowed to be three years behind, and that's just a law, a law that's in place. And we turn over probably every year, and there's another handout in the handout book you'll see on page 20 that shows, we turn over in the neighborhood of $3 million a year or so to the county on this, you know, January 1st or whenever, whenever the files transferred over there. But it, it's a considerable amount of money. But that can also be due to, you know, financial difficulties people have. That it's not just, I, I'm sure, Ed, I absolutely agree with you because I, when I was in public accounting years ago, there were, there are people that do play that game based on their need for cash flows, but there are also people that are, you know, have a financial hardship where they can't.
But we could get that, that information, say, from last year, right? I mean, and you could do a sort on it in a, in a spreadsheet to show where, you know, how many, I think Ed's, Ed Brzezinski is right on this, and it is public information. And I think that, you know, bringing it to light is something for those who are hurting to know. I, I look at those, it's, it's, you know, you have to scan through it all, but you look and you say, oh, here's this person again doing this, or this particular company. I think Ed has pinpointed something that, that we need to at least, you know, if it's not going to be published till January of 2021, we need the January 2020 information, okay? I mean, i- if it comes from the county, that's fine, but just tell us how to get it from the county.
I, I think my first call will be to CAS to find out, you know.
Okay. Ed, can you call CAS to, would you call CAS to follow up on that?
You have to slide it over, slide it over. The tap to talk, yeah.
Ed, Ed B., would you follow up with CAS to get us that information?
Yeah, Ms. Ellen, I talked to Mr. Williams this morning, and he told me he's got a rough draft of it. So we'll have it in our hands pretty quick. And I'll, I'll call CAS and back it up today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It might go on, I want to tell him.
Okay, then continue on the first page of the General Fund. Looking at the expenses and salaries in particular, salaries are up a little bit by a couple million dollars, but those are all contractual. Some of the unions have had raises. You'll look, when, when you get the final document, again, the summary, the summary just shows that salaries are up a couple million dollars. You'll see that overtime is down this year, salaries are up, it's contractual in nature. And the biggest thing in that salary and wage line item that happened was the employee payouts are up considerably this year. And those are all contractual with the police and the fire when they retire. So.
Talking about police, Paul, do we have any information on how their meetings went?
Ed, Ed Betts is working on that as we speak. And they're still in negotiations at this point in time, so.
You know, you talk about contractual, and when we get to the budget document, I am going to remind people of the strong recommendations from PFM about why we're in this pickle. It's not just because of wage increases. We say that, you know, okay, we've addressed the pension dragon. But we, we haven't, we haven't finished addressing the pension dragon because the way we addressed it was to change the forecast for what the rate of return would be and to put more money into it. We heard, and I want to know if in the budget document, it says that now we're prepared to look at, you know, the, the types of retirement benefits that we're offering to both bargaining and non-bargaining people. We found out from PFM that we're like the only municipality in Pennsylvania that's offering 401K-like pension plans and actual pensions. So we're going to hold your feet to the fire on this because this is not sustainable. This is not sustainable. After the water stuff, we're done, we, we have the water. We, this is not sustainable. LERTA that was passed by council does not start to reap benefits other than the, the licenses or permit fees. LERTA is not going to give us additional revenue for, for a long time down the road. And I really need somebody in the administration to join council and say, "Council, you're right." So be prepared for, for tough. I'm sorry, I accidentally muted myself. Be prepared for tough budget questions this time. And I think that unlike in years past, we have some additional people on council who are going to be making the case for some transformational changes. You did it with, with code enforcement, that's organizational. So where are the transformational changes going to come in terms of how this city's finances are working?
Liz, if I could, it's, it's a Pennsylvania law that we have to keep the pensions for the police and fire.
But, but Michael, we, we have new employees that have come in. Look, did you look at the PFM recommendations?
I have.
Okay.
Well, let's digress a second.
What I'm going to do at the next council meeting, I'm going to read the salaries of police and fire. They don't have names attached. I'm going to be like one of those people who does, you know, a filibuster for Congress or for the Senate, and I'm going to read $110,000 X, $98,000 X. Citizens have to know how much we are paying for public safety, and that it's not sustainable. It is not sustainable.
I, I, I repeat, it is not sustainable, and that it's irregularly high for a municipality of this size, or just across the board, actually. But, but that's the reality of where we are in, I was just saying that the state mandates that they, police and fire get those pensions. And so that's just not a place where the, where we have the ability to make the changes.
Which is why PFM recommended that we hire somebody outside to work on those negotiations. Ever since I've brought that up, my good friend Ed Betza has, has really not talked to me. That was not a slam on Ed Betza. I have no idea why we had the state pay money for a financial report where we haven't followed through. Keep this up, and I'm going to go get my MBA in finance. I can't go to law school, but maybe I can get my MBA in finance a little quicker.
Let's get through the book.
Paul?
Moving on. Down the line, you'll see the services and supplies are both down about $200,000 from spending last year to this year. So we've saved about a half a million dollars from the mayor's edict that instead of ordinary and necessary spending, everything has to be emergency spending. So, and there are things in there, included in the services and supplies, those numbers look, you know, million dollars, $2 million. But, but a lot of that, you know, we spend $500,000 a year in gasoline and diesel fuel. We spend X amount of dollars on electricity and national fuel to heat all the buildings. So there's a lot of what, what. So there's a lot of what what counting terms or variable expenses.
The buildings.
Well.
Not our chambers.
That chambers will be, I have on good authority by next Wednesday, the furnaces should be working. So that really takes us through the whole, the the general fund. Again, you'll see you'll see in your full book, the changes and any questions you have on those, you know, please give me a call. Page three in the monthly handout is the sewer revenue fund. Revenue wise, our city charges are about half a million dollars ahead of where they were last year at this time. But we did raise rates last year, so the the usage, the CCF usage usage per household is it's not the households that have gone down, it's our governmental and municipal and industrial and manufacturing, those are down. The schools have been closed. You know, for months, a lot of the the manufacturing concerns in Erie, we're not working at 100% so just the flow has been down.
Paul, I have a question. I don't know if I saw. What are the anticipated rate increases for the sewer refuse?
About a dime per CCF. So the the average household, we're anticipating a couple dollar increase for the average household, but that's about 10 cents per CCF u- usage. So most households use around 18 CCF each quarter, how much flow you have. So it's it's an increase, 3% is the increase itself, if that helps better, Michael. We're going from.
So what's that come out to an average household?
But well, in your book, it's $78 and 78 and a quarter.
$7 and a quarter?
That's for the average household. Yeah, remember sewer is based on your water usage. So if if you have a household where, like the Lipton Waldorf household, when Claire and Charlie are both home from school and we're running the washing machine and the dryer and and you know, we're we're using a lot of water. Same with you, Jim, I know you're laughing, I mean, but yeah. As opposed to a single person that doesn't use as much water, averages averages is just an average of what everybody uses.
I need to speak about that a little bit, if I may. Being an older person, so to speak, I have a lot of these people calling me. And you know, you just talked about the water usage hikes up the sewer fees. A gentleman told me that he pays more in sewer over the summer from, say, May until September because of his garden and things like that, because he's spraying water in his garden and taking care of his grass. He's paying more for sewer. And I explained to him, like you explained, that they're connected, but it's still
Doesn't make it fair.
Doesn't make sense to him because he's paying more in three months than he's paying for the other nine. I just thought I'd slip that in there.
Or fill your pool.
If you fill, yeah, a pool, okay, you can pay. But the guy has a garden, so he doesn't have to pay to buy vegetables.
I would say.
That's all. I'm done.
Okay, so yeah, I guess then, Michael, to answer your question, it's about a 3% increase.
Average homeowner increase per years, per year, is what?
Per year, then it's going to be about $10.
$10 additional for a sewer.
Yes.
What about garbage?
Garbage, we're looking at going from the 261 up to 271, about $10 there too.
A quarter or a year?
A year.
And Paul, I know we talked about last year, what we were, what we wanted to do is have incremental increases each year instead of waiting three or four years and then having to have a really big increase for homeowners. And that's why we were just trying to do it minimally. The average homeowner would be looking at a total of $20 per year. As opposed to, you know, if we waited four years, then it would be like $80 all of a sudden they would have to come up with.
But if we stop taking money from those tour authorities and give the people a break, you know, crazy little things that people that are working don't think about, but folks on a fixed income, they gotta put a stamp on those payments to send them in. That sounds dumb to us, it's what, a buck four or whatever? But it adds up over a year and folks on a fixed income are on a fixed income. And we gotta give them a little bit. If we don't raise those two authority funds quite as heavily, maybe we don't have to to take money out of the pockets of the poor. That's all I gotta say there.
What concerns me is how many people I personally know that have unfortunately moved out of Erie to the surrounding townships. Right down my own street, a few houses away, person was affected by COVID and lost some income, their house is up for sale, they're going to Harbor Creek. I see it more than I don't see it. I know that the housing industry is sustainable, that, you know, people are moving in and out, but but for me, I see unfortunately, it just bothers me when we know people that are going out instead of coming in. Paul, the building, do we have any savings because of less water being used, less electricity, less toilet paper, less paper towels? Can you shut off certain parts of the building that people aren't being in?
There, Kathy, there are some savings in electricity and heating bills, but most of the offices have people in and out on a daily basis, so it would be difficult to, you know, shut areas off.
I think we do and we should be turning off lights if nobody's in an office. I know at the mayor's office, that happens all the time, but hopefully it happens in all of them.
Yes.
I I had to take, talk to somebody in my family, but when you're talking about the rate increases, and I do remember talking about, you know, gradual increases, but is part of this also because of increased cost to administer those bills? Is that broken out as part of the water lease agreement? Didn't we? Didn't we say we were going to pay more for Erie Water Works to to do the billing?
That that is included in the budget, yes.
How much is that?
It's another almost $400,000. It's in it's in your other services and charges in both the sewer fund and the refuse fund.
So isn't part of the increase then to make up for having to pay more for that? I mean, that would be like the way I would think it might be, instead of just, well, we got to raise this gradually.
Well, with any budget, there's always increases to line items and decreases in line items, so that that does come into play and it does come into affecting what is done with the the overall budget, yes.
Paul, how are we doing?
Um, I, so the sewer fund revenues are up and flow is down. The next one is the garbage, page four, the garbage and refuse department. Again, you'll see that the the collections are up, but we had budgeted a little bit, or we had raised the rates this year, so we're on pace to be where we're we're normally at. As we talked about a little while back, that the collection percentage is hanging right around the 98% that it normally is. There's really, going down through the line items there, I have no notations that make anything, you know, nothing of note that you'll see in your complete revenue and expenditure report. Next, page five, the golf fund. Golf fund had a pretty good year this year, as everybody knows. You know, there wasn't a lot to do, so golf was, golf was up. The next page, liquid fuels. We're we're almost done with the paving season, so you'll see that we've almost spent all the money in the budget there. And then the last couple of capital improvements, you approved the the transfer of the money to to replenish the capital improvement bank account. So you'll see that we'd spent about $485,000 this year in capital improvements. And one of them is, Jim, the the furnace system. And then the second, the last page is the debt service, which we've made all our debt payments on time. But the page before that, page eight of nine, I think, risk management, as last year, we had one of the worst years ever as far as our health insurance and and the spending we had on employee health insurance. This year, we're having a pretty good year. As you'll see on page eight, our personal personnel benefits in in the risk management fund are down over $1 million this year. So you'll get your complete book, like I said, the end of the week. Any departmental questions you have, you know, please give me a call. Any specific line items, please give me a call. And then I guess maybe, Jim, the last 15 minutes, do you want to spend talking about a plan for the budget sessions or?
Yes, I do.
Anything specific in the budget book or?
One thing I did want to ask, Paul, before we mentioned that, the parking authority, I I know I had called you earlier this week just to see if there's any progress with whether it's a municipality agreement or an agreement with the city and them, is there any progress to that?
That is continuing as we speak also.
But you do have it budgeted for us to get.
The the same thing as last year, yes.
I have a feeling that's going to be a part of the topic. At one point here, we need to know if we're getting that kind of money, $400,000 or not, that's a chunk of change per se.
Mayor, can I speak for you in this? The mayor's, in in the negotiations with the parking authority, you know, with whatever happens moving forward, you know, the mayor's at least from a budgetary standpoint, I think everybody that works here in in the administration has heard. Any any new contract or any new agreement, municipal service agreement between the city and the parking authority will not be to a to a disadvantage to the city of Erie government, so however the money shakes itself out, we should be sitting in the same, the same situation as we are now.
At least this situation, if not better.
Yes.
I say if not better, okay.
Yeah. Then before, Jim, you take over, I also emailed everybody their preliminary budget handout book this morning and I put a copy in in your inbox at City Hall, it's Council Chambers, so we have almost 100 pages this year. As you get a chance to take a look at this, if there's anything else anybody has, you know, questions about or anything you want us to put some information together on, you know, please give me a call and we'll do our best to get that done for you.
Oh, are we able to schedule our study sessions at this time?
I I think I was going to turn this over to Council President Winarsky and let him, let him decide.
I think.
My, my team is available, you know, we'll make sure we're available whenever council is ready. You call me up and I will talk to the police chief, the fire chief, Dave, and and make sure everybody's available whenever you need us. And then I know, you know, not to speak for Jim, I know each council person will speak to their liaison, you know, multiple times. I know Kathy and I'll talk about this, that and the other thing. And I know so, and I don't have my list in front of me and Liz, your first name in front of me, you'll talk to whoever your liaison to and find out what they did and why they did it. So we'll, we're all available, we're all ready whenever, you know, whenever you are. So then, Jim, I'll stop there and let you take over.
I have one thing, Paul. Could you kind of, I don't want a full budget on it, but could you show us what a budget would look like, not touching Santa's money? You know what I'm talking about, the water authority, the water money. Keep it that 12 or 15 million. We're not going to play Christmas with it, at least I'm not. Thank you.
I can do that.
Okay.
I think we also have to realize that COVID has affected us, you know, pretty seriously and that I seriously think we really should not increase salaries this year. I'm sorry to have to say that, but if I can live with what I'm living with and have lived successfully this long, you know, other people can stretch and find out where they can save too.
Okay, let me make sure we're on here. Back to, I don't know what people's schedules are, I don't know if since this week's shot now for any sessions, I don't know if we start Monday, November 9th, if Monday's good for anybody or isn't good. I know, I was thinking Monday, tentatively now, I mean, we can, you guys can check your schedule and ladies, check your schedule and we can adjust from there, but I know they do have to advertise, but well, sitting here, I was thinking Monday, November 9th, and I don't know if 6 o'clock is a good time for everyone. I'll be honest with you, 5:30, it makes it tough for me personally, but I don't know.
Monday, I am not available.
And then I know. How many days? Deadline for what? End of year?
Mr. President, Monday is not, I'm not available.
All righty. I know we have.
I'd say I, I'd like to make a recommendation that we use our Thursday's study sessions for the budget sessions that covers the having it to be publicized and it's something that we ordinarily make ourselves available on that day anyway.
I have no problem with that. The only thing is, our very first Thursday, we do have a study session with the Port Authority and the Convention Center Authority. I have no problem with adding a budget session to that if council's in agreement. And I have no problem with going Thursday after Thursday to go on with the budget sessions from there.
I don't, I don't think you'll have enough Thursdays to get through all the departments. I mean, one of them's Thanksgiving too. In November, you only have the 19th. And we have police, fire, public works. We also have the Department of Planning now, Department of Economic and Community Development. We have a lot to run through. I want to say, I don't know if anybody remembers, how many did we have last year? Nine? Somewhere around that?
We had a lot.
Yeah.
We had a lot because I had to, we had some back-to-back Monday Tuesdays.
Mr. President, I suggest that we set it up and those of us who can make it, we'll make it.
I have no problem with that if that's, because we do have to get more than one a week. I agree with that.
Also use Thursdays too.
I was also thinking our Wednesday, November 18th meeting, if we wanted to do a budget session before the meeting, that may, if we're all gonna be together already, maybe we could start at six o'clock on that Wednesday and then have our council meeting.
That would work, yeah.
That would be fine too. As far as adding a budget session with the Port Authority, I don't know how long.
That might be for a long night.
Exactly. My attention span, you know, I stretch it as much as I can, but that's gonna be a long. And, and because the budgets are important, you know, very, you know, this financial matter is very important. So we want to have our heads clear.
What do you expect from the Port Authority and the civic authority?
We need to have transparency as to how they've been affected by COVID and what their future plans are and how they can contribute to our community as a whole. Thanks.
All right. No, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to see where we were going with it, because it is important.
Right. Um, no, that's why I wanna give them as much attention as I can. I, you know, I've been concerned with no income coming in from entertainment taxes. And, you know, just overall what we can or cannot do with entertainment because of COVID. And I think unfortunately, according to Dr. Fauci, COVID's going to be something that's with us this winter season.
What I'll do is, and if it's all right with everybody.
Well, Jim, as everybody's not gonna get a chance to talk to their liaison, do you wanna start off next week, one of the nights? And we'll just talk about revenues?
We can do that.
Yeah, and I'll go through line by line and explain to everybody where these numbers came from and how they came up. And that way, we're not pushing it back a week. So everyone, you know, everyone gets to talk to their liaison. That's not an easy one. That's, that's one that I don't need anybody else there, you know, other than my team. Lisa, Christine, Kim are fine. And we could talk about, you know, I could go through revenues in an hour or two. We could have Chris talk about risk management that night also. And that way, that could get us, I mean, we're gonna talk about those things eventually. So if we get those out of the way the first week, maybe the revenue side of this gets everybody understanding, you know, what money we have, how we have it, where we have it and what we have available.
Yeah, and then maybe the following week, we can do the, whether it be a Monday or Tuesday. I would suggest Monday and then do Wednesday morning and then possibly Thursday, the 19th. Get three of them in the week of the 16th. And then follow up maybe with one before Thanksgiving on top of that. What I'll do is we'll get a tentative schedule out there, see how it fits everybody else's schedule and go from there. How's that sound? But to get the ball rolling, I agree with Paul with the revenue and then we can move from there.
Quick question too. Now with the Department of Planning and Neighborhood Resources, was anybody assigned to be liaison with Kathy Rosdick?
I'm gonna say no, not in this.
Renee, I can do that because I've done, you know, blighted property and land bank. So, and, and even neighborhood growth partnership, but I haven't actually gone to a lot of those neighborhood growth partnership meetings. So I'm happy to volunteer for that.
Okay. Thank you.
So. One other question, when we have this dog and pony show, when everybody comes in and tells us why they need all the money they need? How about if we ask them how they can cut five or 10% from their budgets? Let's, let's get real, because we're talking about our city's money. And everybody would like to have, you know, and everybody's doing a good job. But I gotta think there's a lot of dead money hiding. You know how that works? If I've got $10 in the budget and I only spend eight, then next year I only get eight.
Or if I get 10, I ought to make sure I spend the 10 because I'm gonna lose it.
That's all. I'm just concerned about the future of Erie, guys. Thank you.
That sound good to you, Ms. Schaff? Okay, with that, I believe we can close our meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. Jim, so when's our next meeting now?
Then tentatively Monday or Tuesday, which we'll send out. We're gonna have Pauline send out a tentative budget schedule and see how it works for everybody. Because we can go and say, I can make and not make. It'll be easier if we get something out there to start with and then go from there. But we're definitely gonna have one next week with Paul regarding revenues. And then we'll follow up the following week, because we do have a study session next week also. So we have two things going on next week. And then maybe the following week include with our council meeting, we can fit in two or three, at least two budget sessions. And maybe one on the day of our council meeting. But we'll get a tentative schedule out there to see, get the feelers out there, see how it works for everybody.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mayor Joe. Thank you, Renee. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you.
I was just gonna suggest, I don't know anybody who's done a doodle poll, but that, they can look intimidating, but they work to figure out who can attend what. So any group I've been on where we try and figure out when we can meet, that helps to narrow it down. Just a suggestion.
And we can suggest to the girls in the office if they're familiar with that, and I'm good with that also.
Yeah, I don't know how to, to do that, but I've, I've done that as far as having people send them to me.
Yeah, somebody will know how to do it. It's train the trainer time. Okay, bye.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll talk to you soon.
Thank you.
What'd you do?